I call to order this meeting of the Cowie County Board of Education, Agenda 805, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Recognition's Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Public Information Officer Dean Jackson to bring us our recognitions. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. We have several presentations and recognitions tonight, and our very first one is our core business. We have Jefferson Parkway Elementary School here tonight, who's going to show us a third grade writing lesson. To introduce his teacher and her students, I'm going to call on Principal Sean Die to introduce.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Sean Die, the principal at Jefferson Parkway Elementary School. And as a point of emphasis at our school this year and a part of our school improvement plan, we are focusing on writing. And we are looking at some innovative writing strategies in our third grade classrooms. Ms. Latonya Reeves, who was our former Teacher of the Year and third grade teacher, is here with five of her students this evening to share one example of the work they are doing in their classroom to help us accomplish this goal. Ms. Reeves.
Good evening. Recognizing the importance of students being able to apply language standards to speaking and writing in third grade, we are focusing on using our writing to express thoughts and ideas that can be understood by the reader. In order to master one of our standards in ELA, I provided the following learning activities for my students. In third grade, students are to write narratives, to develop a real or imagined experiences or events using effective technique, descriptive details, and clear sequences. After attending a write-a-little-a-lot training, the write-around strategy was implemented during language arts instruction. Based on previously analyzed writing tasks, students showed a weakness in the area of creating and/or elaborating on their ideas. I explained the process of the teachers, although we were students during our training, having to each write the beginning of our story based on a picture that we were shown. I emphasized what I could see in the picture and how I had to make up the story from the beginning, even creating the characters that I did not see. The read aloud, I read aloud the finished story I had started and that of another teacher that I had available. Then, I gave the students a page with a picture and some lines to start their writing. I gave step one directions for each student to begin a story and to write for five minutes. After the timer went off, the students stood and started walking around the room as the music started playing. When the music stopped, I gave step two directions to read the story that was presented in front of them and to continue the story from the point from where the last person had left off. They had three minutes to continue the story. The third time around, the directions were to create an ending to the story within two to three minutes. Finally, all the students returned to their seats, read their story to themselves, and then a few people shared their collaboration in front of the class. The goal was to write-a-little, to engage students in free writing, emphasizing adding details to support the idea so that they would feel less intimidated developing their own stories, and to connect the lesson to real life through a picture that represented a real-life problem. In the future, I am sure that the students will increase utilizing all of our language skill, like capitalization and punctuation, more consistently towards making their writing more understandable for their readers. I'd like to present the students of Jefferson Parkway. Katie Solares, Jonathan Gomez, come guys, come on. Braylon Horstley, Hannah Williams, and Hunter Scott. They're going to share their collaborated stories as well as their experience.
In Ms. Reeves' class, we are asked to apply ourselves each day by using capital letters and sentences. The thing I like most about this class is that we get to read after work. This activity taught me to use more words for my writing. The activity taught me how this subject connects to the real world by helping me learn better words. My future goals include being a teacher. There once was two people driving in a car, and they saw a hole in the driveway, and they were trying to move the car, but it would not move, so they called the fire department. So the fire department can pull them out of the hole. The fire department got them out the hole, and they went to the hospital to see if they were okay. They came out and they were okay, and then they went home and they ordered food. And they ate, went to the movie room to watch a movie and eat. In Ms. Reeves' room, we're asked to apply ourselves each day by adding punctuation marks, like exclamation marks, chis marks, and more. The thing I like most about this class is spelling words in cursive. This activity taught me to look at the picture, then describe me about the picture. This activity taught me how this subject connects to the real world by, like, writing cards, letters, and sentences. My future goals include using my best handwriting because nobody but I understand it. Linda was driving her car when a hole appeared out of nowhere. Fortunately, she failed to stop, but she survived and went to the hospital. Her family started a GoFundMe. They raised $1 million. Four years later, she donated $5 million dollars, and a reporter came to Linda's house. They asked if she was okay, but she told them a story. She told them that her husband knew where the hole was. The husband got sued, and he was in jail coming for revenge.
In Ms. Reeves' class, we are asked to apply ourselves each day by writing better and putting punctuation marks on our sentences. The thing I like most about this class is all the cursive we learn and the fun stuff we do. This activity taught me how to add on details to tell about a picture. Also can help me add on to my own story. This activity taught me how this subject connects to the real world by helping me achieve goals in writing. My future goals include adding a little more writing. I want to be an actor, and I have to write my own script. One day, a mom and her two sons were in the car driving to Atlanta. Suddenly, there was a crack in the road. The mom, the mom thought it was no problem, but the two sons were scared. Then, they were scared because there was more cracks on the road. The mom told the sons to calm down, and nothing would happen. But the sons told their mom to come, to call dad or the fire department to come. But the mom kept going and going until the mom realized that the roof has a big crack in it. Then, the fire department finally arrived. They tied a rope to the car, and then they finally pulled the car out. And thankfully, everyone was okay. The end.
In Ms. Reeves' class, we are asked to apply ourselves each day by doing mudding, by doing morning language practice cursive, or doing mudding math. The thing I like most about this class is learning how to write in cursive. That is my favorite thing in her class. This activity taught me how to write beginning, middle, and end in a story. This activity taught me how to, how this subject connects to the real world by writing neatly and understanding other people's writings. My future goals include be successful by becoming a teacher and then a dancer. I want to become a teacher because I want to share my learning experience with other people. There was a couple, two kids, grandma and grandpa. They were going to Disney World. Halfway there, the road broke. Then, everyone was so scared when they fell in the road. Everyone was okay. Thankfully, everyone escaped the car by using the trunk. They called 911. Their car fell and fell, but thankfully survived the car accident.
In Ms. Reeves' class, we are asked to apply ourselves each day by making our handwriting better because some people's handwriting is not the best. The thing I like most about this class is that it is my second favorite class because I do cursive. This activity taught me more about elaborating other stories so we can do it to our own. This activity taught me how their subject connects to the real world by helping me achieve goals. My goals include adding details, capitals, and punctuation. My writing will help me sign my baseball contract. One day, the learners were driving, and the ground started shaking. Then they heard crack. The cars started falling into the ground. It sounded like an earthquake. The mom started screaming with the child. The dad tried to calm the mom, and out of nowhere, somebody saved them. Nobody got hurt. It was a miracle. When the kid got older, he wrote and then later published it. People still read his books today.
And these are our wonderful students of Jefferson Parkway. Hope you've enjoyed their stories.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves and students. Our next presentation tonight is something of a Christmas season tradition. We are going to hear from the Cowie County 4-H, and we have a number of students and representatives today. And I'd like to ask Cowie County 4-H Extension Agent Bill Hammond and folks with him to come on down if he could introduce everyone, and I understand they come bearing gifts.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you very much. It is an annual tradition. Cookies for our sponsors, for those who support 4-H. I'm Bill Hammond, Cowie County Extension Agent for 4-H. I've got two 4-Hers with me, and I've asked them to kind of share just a couple thoughts of why they do 4-H.
Hello. My name is Isabel Jones, and I am a seventh grader at Madras Middle School and an active member of the 4-H. I'm involved in many 4-H clubs, including K-9, agriculture, and shooting sports, and many more. The thing that started me in 4-H was district project achievement in fifth grade. I love 4-H for a certain amount of reasons. I've learned many things from 4-H. For example, I've learned to be independent and to public speak. Both of these things are very important when it comes to my educational career and my life in general. The 4-H model is learn by doing. I believe that the motto was important because by observing and jumping in, you can develop your skills, practical knowledge, and wisdom. Always give your heart to greater loyalty, your hands to larger service, and your health to better living. If we all live by these virtues, we can make the world a better place. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Josie Robertson. I'm the Cowie County President. I've grown up in 4-H and have experienced many opportunities. Some of these including gaining new friends, rekindling old friendships, learning new opportunities, and leadership skills. And I can't wait to see what the future holds. Thank you.
So we greatly appreciate the support that the school system and the school board gives us. I look forward to many more years and many more impacts through 4-H. I have candy for you.
We have two more big recognitions tonight, big in terms of the number of people here for each one of these, but also because this was just monumental news that's excited our whole community for both of these honors. And so the very first one is the Noonan High School softball team. I'm going to ask them all to come in if they would, please. I'm going to call on Dr. Jamal Kemp to introduce his coach and the players of the 2023 GHSA Class 6A State Champions, Noonan High School softball team.
Good evening, Dr. Horton, Dr. Guy, and to all the board members. Before we begin, I also want to recognize we have the best athletic director in the state of Georgia here with us, Mr. Randy Robbins. All right, today, we would like to take the time to recognize the 2023 6A State Champions, Our Lady Cougars. The Lady Cougars had a 27-7 record this season, shutting out every opponent throughout the state playoffs. We are exceptionally proud of Our Lady Cougars. With every great team, there is a great coach. I would like to introduce the 2023 Georgia Dugout Club 6A Coach of the Year, Ms. Carrie Gilmore, who would do the honors of introducing this year's Noonan Cougars softball team.
Thank you, guys, and I really appreciate your support. I've had so many comments, emails from the community, from the board members. We really appreciate everything that you guys have done to support our team. So to introduce our team, we have Assistant Coach Abby Garner, Coach Allison Johns, Mark Gilmore, and then Dr. Kemp already introduced our great Athletic Director, Mr. Randy Robbins. And then for our players, we have Addison Smith, who made All-State Team. Mia Reddick. Evy Mathis. Brooke Tucker. Callie Norton. Piper Willie. Gabby Espy. C.A. Moss. Abby Stewart. Chloe Walker. Carly Hector. Gracie Smith. Another All-State selection, Presley Ivy. And Matty Ville. And Matty Ville was the Georgia Athletic Coaches Association Player of the Year for 6A. She was also the Georgia Dugout Club Peach State Player of the Year for all classifications. So thank you again. This has been such a great group to work with, and we are so happy to represent Cowie County.
Hi, I want to get a picture. This is, this is, this is what I want y'all to do. We're gonna take it from over there. You want to come forward and then just forward a little bit. If y'all could, I didn't get in between them right behind. Can y'all jump in? Yes, right over there. There you go. Nope, I think you're good. And then I'm gonna get up. Now, if y'all will move down just a little bit, and I'll close in. Ready. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. One more. Yes. That'll do it. Congratulations.
Giving it just a moment because we have one big group of champions to get out and another big one to come in. And I'll introduce them. Our next up is also a tradition going back really more than a generation now, and that is Northgate High School Cheerleading, winning state championship. I'm going to call on Dr. Ashley Wilks, Principal of Northgate High School, to introduce her 2023 Georgia High School Association Class 5A State Champions and their coach tonight.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Ashley Wilks, Principal of Northgate High School, and I'm Joint Bar Athletic Director, Mr. Brian Hicks. And I have the privilege of introducing the 2023 Georgia High School 5A State Championship Cheer Team in front of you today. Their title makes our 28th state title at Northgate High School, and it is our 11th state title in the cheerleading program. Not only are these phenomenal athletes before you today, but they're also just phenomenal people. They are led by one of our school counselors and Northgate Cheer alumni, Taylor Callahan, whose tireless commitment and drive for excellence not only shows on the mat, but in the development of her athletes into role models for our school and our community. So now, Coach Taylor Callahan will introduce her girls.
Thank you for having us tonight. This team is super special to me. They came off of a great season in 2022, but it was not a win. And so they came back working really, really hard to make this state title non-negotiable with their skills and with the judges. So I'm incredibly proud of the hard work that these girls put in day in and day out. They definitely earned it. Their scores show that they earned it. And so you are in the presence of champions tonight, definitely. So thank you for having us. I'll start with the seniors first. We've got Alyssia Brantley. Riley Prey. Maddie Gordon. Ella Longmire. Bobby Sedgwick. Moving on to our juniors, we've got Maddox Jenkins. Reagan Tolson. And Gracie Young. And for our sophomores, we have Aubrey Johnson. Kimber Lackey. Haley Stewart. And our freshmen tonight are Abby Holloman. Grace Seving. And Chloe Engel.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 14th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Action items, Group One, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first action item I have for you in Group One is to approve 2024 Board Meeting Dates, Times, and Locations. Cowie County Board of Education regular meetings will be held on the dates listed below at 6:30 PM at the central office located at 167 Wears Industrial Boulevard. Dates are as follows: January 9th, '24, February 13th, March 12th, April 9th, May 14th, June 11th, July 9th, August 13th, September 10th, October 8th, November 12th, and December 10th. Mr. Chair, I bring those to you in the form of a recommendation for approval.
Is there a motion to approve the 2024 Board of Education Meeting Dates, Times, and Locations?
So moved.
Is there a second? Yep, thank you, Mr. Farmer. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
The next item I have for you in Group One is to approve Cowie County's 2024 Georgia School Board Association Legislative Liaison. Tonight, we need to identify and appoint a member of the board to serve on GSBA's Legislative Liaison Network as Cowie County's representative for the 2024 Session of the Georgia General Assembly. The appointee will attend GSBA's Annual 2024 Summer Conference in Savannah, Georgia during June of 2024. Mr. Chair, with that, I'll open the floor for nominations.
Yeah, I'll nominate Mr. Buzz Glover.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Or, sorry, I need to, I need to close. Is there a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. All right, is there a motion to approve Mr. Buzz Glover as the GSBA Legislative Liaison?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I will say, congrats, Mr. Glover. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
The next item I have for you in Group One is to approve a contingency change request for additional painting in Building 700 at Noonan High School. Approval was requested for a contingency change request to paint interior walls, hollow metal doors, door frames, window frames, and stairway handrails in Building 700 at Noonan High School. Base bid specified painting only the new walls and disturbed areas. This contingency change request covers the cost to paint all other interior walls and hollow metal door frames and doors and handrails. Architect has verified that the proposal meets project specifications and the proposal cost is reasonable based on current market prices. The total contingency change proposal cost is $34,990. Change order proposal and supporting documentation is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a contingency change request for additional painting in Building 700 at Noonan High School. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
The next item I have for you in Group One is to approve a change order proposal to add lockers at the softball fieldhouse at Noonan High School. Approval was requested for a change order proposal to add lockers at the softball fieldhouse at Noonan High School. The base bid did not call for new lockers in the existing softball locker room. The total contingency change proposal cost is $34,387. Change order proposal and supporting documentation is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a change order proposal to add lockers at the softball fieldhouse at Noonan High School. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
The next item I have for you in Group One is to approve a contingency change request for Noonan High School BP3 for additional required structural supports in the storm shelter. Approval was requested for a contingency change request to add structural supports under piping in the storm shelter area of the academic building at Noonan High School. Requirements for the storm shelter call for additional structural reinforcing under all piping that penetrates to the upper levels of the building. Based on field conditions of metal mechanical pipe locations, the original detail for the structural supports was not applicable. Revised specifications to accommodate the field conditions have been issued, and the additional costs are provided in the attached documentation. The architect has verified that the proposal meets the requirements for the storm shelter and the proposal cost is reasonable based on current market prices. Total contingency change proposal cost is $104,045.10. Mr. Chair, I will mention to you that when we initially did design on Noonan High School, the specifications called for, I think, 20 such penetrations. They thought that 20 such penetrations would exist from the storm shelter to the upper levels of that facility. Once we got into the project, there are four times that there are 80 of those such penetrations, and the FEMA requirements and the specifications call for those to be, for lack of a better word, encapsulated with structural support. So that is the reason for this contingency request, and with that, I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve a contingency change request for Noonan High School BP3, Bid Package 3, for additional required structural supports in the storm shelter?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.
The last item I have for you in Group One is to approve several new course requests or additional course requests at the Central Educational Center. And for this item, I'm gonna call on Dr. Chase Puckett, who's the Director of Secondary Instruction and Gifted Programs, and Mr. Mark Whitlock, who's CEO of our Central Educational Center. Gentlemen?
Good evening. One of our challenges is to continue to make sure that we can ensure that we have a competitive, talented workforce for current and future career needs in our area. In order to better support our growing local business and industry, we have worked together through the CTA Department and through the CEC, with the CEC Board, listening to our stakeholders, listening to business and industry reps, to make sure that we continue to lead in Georgia when it comes to our career academy. So it is our recommendation that we continue to support industry and local economic development needs by adding nine new courses. Three of those courses will better support some of the growing industry in our area and state. That would be Introduction to Hardware Technology, Gaming App and Web Design, and Introduction to Engineering Technology and Robotics. We believe these courses will support the existing content and will also help support emerging industry needs around our area. Three other new courses will be a new pathway offered at CEC based on enrollment, and this will be in the field of financial technology, often referred to as fintech. Fintech encompasses using all of those technological advances for the behind-the-scenes operations for financial services. Every time you swipe your debit card or use Venmo, PayPal, or Zelle, you're using financial technology. The addition of Introduction to Financial Technology, financial technology encoding for fintech will complete a new pathway at the CEC. Also, the Atlanta metro area is the fintech employment center for the nation. Finally, we have three new courses we would like to recommend, which would be a new pathway. This involves the area of mechatronics. It would include three classes: Introduction to Mecatronics and Robotics, AC Electrical Motors and Automation, and Mechanical Systems, Semiconductors and Automation. This will create a new advanced manufacturing pathway at the CEC in the field of mechatronics. This combines mechanical, engineering, automation, robotics, and electronics. It is also the direction of manufacturing, advanced manufacturing today, and is an incredibly busy, fast-growing industry here in Coweta County. We believe these nine courses will begin to be offered at the CEC based on enrollment and will continue to grow the enrollment at CEC, support the base high schools and their college career performance index, and will also ensure we provide a competitive talent for current and future careers. Mr. Mark Whitlock?
Thank you, Dr. Puckett, for your work on this and for the opportunity to work with you to gather feedback from local business and industry. That is the key to this. This came from feedback from local business and industry, from data in our metro Atlanta area. I was looking at one data point today, a brand-new one. Atlanta and Georgia are one of the 10 top places in the nation for average incomes for gaming developers. $120,000 a year is the average in the state of Georgia. That's an example of the kind of data that we've been able to pull, and Dr. Puckett has talked about the stakeholders that we've listened to. Thank you for your support, and we appreciate this opportunity.
And, Mr. Chair, I recommend approval. We'll note that we don't anticipate that this will require any additional staff at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Is there a motion to approve the Central Educational Center's additional courses request?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I have a couple follow-ups. So I understand this in reading that we're not, and Dr. Horton said, we're not adding additional staff. Will we have to, will there be any additional training that we're gonna have to have the teachers go through?
Yes, sir. We have, we'll be making, taking advantage of CTA Perkins funds for the Perkins grant we apply for, and as teachers need and directors need additional training, we'll begin to provide that for them, and we do anticipate we'll be able to fund that entirely through the CTA Perkins grant.
Okay, thank you. And then, just rolling out, will it just be next year, I'm assuming?
Yes, we'll work very closely with Principal of CEC, Mr. Hines, and Dr. Don Revere, and the base high school counselors. We'll begin to offer some of the courses based on enrollment requests. We'll allow students to request certain courses after we've had time to update their parents, the teachers, and the staff members. Some of the pathways, we may phase in immediately for fall of this next year. The financial technology class is one that may be a little bit further down the road as we continue to make sure that we scale up our directors and their teaching capability. But we absolutely look forward to bringing them in as quick as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's what I was gonna ask as well. How are we gonna let the students know that they're now available? So just through the counselors and getting that word out.
One of the things we'll do tomorrow is I will reach out to the base high school principals and counselors to let them know the courses are approved, and I'll be meeting with the counselors and the administrators very quickly to update them on the pathways. And at their request, we will also begin putting it out through social media, through school system websites, to make them aware of the new courses and pathways. And our goal will be to increase the awareness for everyone so they're aware of all the great pathways at CEC, including the existing pathways. So it'll be out soon.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. There are no action items in Group Two, Group Three trips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll call on Dr. Mark Guy to bring you a trip from Noonan High School. Dr. Guy?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. The principal of Noonan High School requests permission for the Noonan High School Concert Band to travel to Orlando, Florida to participate in the Universal Studios Sound Design Art of Foley recording session on February 19 through the 22nd, 2025. The students will not miss any days of instruction, and there is no cost to the school system.
Recommend approval.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Is there a motion to approve the Noonan High School field trip request?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Superintendent's report, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Mr. Chris Latimer, a comptroller. He's gonna bring your budget report and sales tax tonight. Mr. Latimer?
All right, good evening, everyone. For our financial report, this is our November report, and we have completed 41.67% of fiscal year '24, and we've expanded 40.67% of our budget. For the month of November, we are under budget approximately $379,000, and cumulatively, we are over budget for the year $42,774. Moving on to the sales tax report, our sales tax receipts were $3.2 million for the month of November, which is slightly below our average for the last 12 months, but overall, sales tax revenues continue to be strong.
Thank you, Mr. Latimer. Call on Dr. Guy once again to bring you a staff and student attendance and Board Goal Report. Dr. Guy?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. For the fourth reporting period for attendance, the highest staff attendance was Jefferson Parkway Elementary School, the highest student attendance in the program area, Central Educational Center. Highest student attendance for elementary school are Arbor Springs Elementary. Highest middle school student attendance was Blake Bass Middle School. And the highest high school student attendance was Northgate High School, home of the Vikings. Tonight's Board Goal Report will involve information related to our system wellness plan, and I'd like to recognize Director of Food Services and Nutrition, Ms. Robin Gold. Ms. Gold?
I have with me this evening Susan Turner. She's a teacher and fax teacher and department chair at Noonan High School, along with three Food for Life students. We have Diaria Johnson, Molly Canner, and Bonnie Canner, and they are currently handing out a smoothie sample that is a fruit-based, so if you have any food allergies, be sure to pass on this, or the girls do have a list of that. But I'm here this evening to update the board on recent wellness activities happening across Coweta County School. There are three USDA wellness policy guidelines with measurable goals. Those goals include nutrition education and promotion, physical activity, and other wellness board-related wellness-based activities. This semester, school nutrition was awarded a grant as part of the state's Local Food for School Pilot Program. We partnered with Piedmont Barbecue from Fairburn, Georgia. The owner came down to visit Willis Road Elementary and cooked and served the students different flavors of barbecue. They experienced sweet, tangy, and smoky options, and they're very excited to have new barbecue options in the future. We are also continuing our food, fresh fruit and vegetable program, which we obtained through a grant. And at seven elementary schools across the county, we offer, in addition to their meal program, a fresh fruit and vegetable snack to the students and the teachers free of charge, and that's twice weekly. And then lastly, two weeks ago, we implemented a new high school signature meal project. And today, our area consultant from the State Nutrition Department came down to witness. Students working collaborated with the school nutrition program, using nutrition education and student engagement to create meals, signature meals for the high school. And so now, I'd like to let the students lead the community engagement and the nutrition promotion from Noonan High School.
Good evening. I am Molly Canner. We are Noonan High School students who are currently enrolled in the Food for Life program at Noonan High School. We collaborated on a project with Coweta County School Nutrition Director, Robin Gold, to create breakfast and lunch menus to be incorporated into our school lunch program.
All five Food for Life classes in Family and Consumer Science Departments follow the same state guidelines, state federal guidelines, which Miss Gold must adhere to in order to create meals, which we thought appeared to Noonan High School students. Each class then voted on their menus, and the class winners were then put to a school-wide vote. The winning breakfast and lunch menus will come to life in the near future in Noonan's cafeteria. The smoothie bowl we serve tonight is one of the winning breakfast entrees. Thank you.
It looks just like the picture. It looks so yummy.
And, Board members, the last item I have for you tonight is the Facilities and Construction Report. You can see Northgate High School, both the renovations, modifications, the additions are still on there, just trying to get those projects closed out. You've heard a little bit about softball fieldhouses this evening. Demos completed East Coweta. Footings will be poured over the course of the next couple of weeks at Noonan and, or, excuse me, East Coweta and Northgate, and then interior demolitions underway at Noonan, and building demolition should begin next week out there. Band towers, hopefully those will, once we get materials in, we'll be able to start going vertical with those at the first of the year. Noonan High School, most of the work now is involved in BP3, the gym BP2. We're just working on punch list items, and then some exterior work on the walkway out there and the ticket booth. BP3, the academic buildings, if you've been by, windows are progressing on the front of the building there. Auditorium seating risers are now complete, and painting is taking place in multiple areas of the building. We still are on track for completion for next July, July of 2024. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Impeccable timing, 7:15. So it is that time of the meeting where we're gonna turn to public comments. In order to improve communication between the Board of Education and the citizens of Coweta County, the Board of Education encourages citizens to attend regularly scheduled board meetings and speak on matters of public education concern. Forty-five minutes will be set aside for this purpose. To guarantee an orderly meeting and to ensure that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak, the Board of Education has implemented the following rules regarding public comment. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. The Board of Education will listen to each presentation without comment. After the presentation is made, each board member may respond if he or she wishes to for a period no longer than one minute each. Only citizens of Coweta County or employees of the Coweta County School System may speak in the public comment portion of the meeting. No grievances will be heard concerning any specific personnel action or any specific county employee except through the grievance procedure set forth in the Board's personnel policy. No one will be allowed to discuss any matter involving threatened or pending litigation with the Board of Education during the public comment portion of the meeting. In order to preserve order in the meeting, no person attending the meeting will be allowed to boo, hiss, cheer, clap.
to boo, hiss, cheer, clap, or otherwise show approval or disapproval for any speaker in any manner whatsoever. No signs or placards advocating any action or position will be allowed at the meeting. No personal attacks on any person will be allowed. I, as the chairman of the Board, am responsible for enforcing these rules. No citizen or system employee will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking on matters of public concern at the Board of Education meeting. Any person not recognized within the allotted time period for public comment will be rescheduled to speak at the next meeting, and requests to speak during the public comment portion of a meeting must be received at the Board of Education office no later than three hours prior to that meeting being called to order. Okay, and we'll go to the first one. James Radar Brantley.
My name is James Radar Brantley. I was employed with Calhwyda School System for over 38 years. Taught at Ruth Hill Elementary School, head athletic trainer over at Noonan High School. What I'd like to do today is to thank Calhwyda County School System, the Board of Education, Evan Horton, Dr. Guy, Jordan Kennard, and John Wolf for asking the Board to name the new athletic training facility at Noonan High School, the Mullins Brantley Athletic Training Facility. It's a great honor. I am so overjoyed. I just don't know what to say to y'all, but thank you, thank you, thank you. Calhwyda County is a great place to raise your kids. The community is a wonderful place, and my two boys went to Noonan High School. I look up there and I see people that I had in either elementary school or in high school that are on the Board of Education, and like I say, it's just a great privilege to have worked for the Calhwyda County School System. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine Meehan.
Good evening, board members, county staff, community members. Thank you for the opportunity to continue to address you all. In 1965, a popular radio host by the name of Paul Harvey sounded an alarm in what he believed to be a warning to the American people regarding the fate of our nation. It is quite astonishing how 53 years ago, this man essentially prophesized our spiritual state of being for today. Many thought he was over the top, but as I read his words, think about where we are now in these times. It is uncanny how spot-on he was. It is "If I Were the Devil" by Paul Harvey. If I were the devil, if I were the prince of darkness, I'd want to engulf the whole world in darkness. And if I have a third of its real estate and four fifths of its population, but I wouldn't be happy until I had seized the ripest apple on the tree, thee. So I'd set about however necessary to take over the United States. I'd subvert the churches first. I'd begin with a campaign of whispers. With the wisdom of a serpent, I would whisper to you as I whispered to Eve, "Do as you please." To the young, I would whisper that the Bible is a myth. I would convince them that man created God instead of the other way around. I would confide that what's bad is good, and what is good is square. And the old, I would teach to pray after me, "Our Father, which art in Washington," and then I'd get organized. I'd educate authors in how to make lurid literature exciting so that anything else would appear dull and uninteresting. I'd threaten TV with dirtier movies and vice versa. I'd peddle narcotics to whom I could. I'd sell alcohol to ladies and gentlemen of distinction. I'd tranquilize the rest with pills. If I were the devil, I'd soon have families at war with themselves, churches at war with themselves, and nations at war with themselves, until each in its turn was consumed. And with promises of higher ratings, I'd have mesmerizing media fanning the flames. If I were the devil, I would encourage schools to refine young intellects, but neglect to discipline emotions, just let those run wild, until before you knew it, you'd have to have drug-sniffing dogs and metal detectors at every schoolhouse door. Within a decade, I'd have prisons overflowing. I'd have judges promoting pornography. Soon, I could evict God from the courthouse, then from the schoolhouse, and then from the Houses of Congress. And in his own churches, I would substitute psychology for religion and deify science. I would lure priests and pastors into misusing boys and girls and church money. If I were the devil, I'd make the symbol of Easter an egg, and the symbol of Christmas a bottle. If I were the devil, I'd take from those who have and give to those who want it until I had killed the incentive of the ambitious. And what will you bet? I couldn't get whole states to promote gambling as the way to get rich. I would caution against extremes in hard work, in patriotism, in moral conduct. I would convince the young that marriage is old-fashioned, that swinging is more fun, that what you see on TV is the way to be. And thus, I could undress you in public, and I could lure you into bed with diseases for which there is no cure. In other words, if I were the devil, I'd just keep right on doing what he's doing. This was one of many warnings of what was to come, and then here we are. We cannot continue to normalize immorality. You cannot ignore it, and that is what you are all doing by refusing to push back against the enemy. And if you have not figured out who our enemy is yet, then you clearly have not been paying attention. The devil is no longer lurking in the shadows. He is proudly marching around waving flags and dancing in the streets. He is parading through schools. He has consumed Hollywood and our media for display and all to see, and he has engulfed our government. However, knowing who our enemy is is empowering. It gives us the authority to cast him away and reject his deceit. I will continue to pray for each of you that you might come to see the light and repent for your acceptance of immorality in our schools. I pray for our country and our nation that the eyes of everyone will be opened. We must not continue to allow evil to have such power. The continued silence of good people, of Christians, is damning us further, and our children are and will be paying a heavy price because of it. Thank you.
Thank you all for being in attendance this evening, both online and in person. I also thank the members of the public who signed up to speak. There will not be any public comment responses from the Board this evening. Moving on to board comments.
I'd like to just say, it was my honor, Radar, to name that building after you. For your years and years and years of dedicated, of taking care of athletes and keeping them safe and healthy, we owe a great deal of gratitude to you.
I'd also like to say a word of thanks to Radar. If you go online, you can find out that there are three athletic trainers in the Georgia Athletic Trainer Association Hall of Fame. One of those is the late Dale Kroc, who was athletic trainer at Northgate High School for many years. The other one is East Calhwyda, Lloyd Knott. And the third one is James Radar Brantley. So we're fortunate to have had the three athletic trainers that are currently, and that's all that's in the Hall of Fame at this time, if I'm not mistaken. So we're happy and honored to name the building after you and to have the quality of athletic trainers that we have and have had here in Calhwyda County. Thank you for your service and what you've done for athletics here in Calhwyda County, not just Noonan High School, but I know you guys, y'all cover all three high schools. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you for coming tonight and for all you've done all these years. It wasn't a hard decision whose name to put on the building, so you made it pretty easy, Radar, and you've touched so many lives across so many years. It's just amazing, and tonight was just a great meeting. There were so many little slices of all the great things going on in the school system, academically, sports, just everything, and appreciate you being a part of all that all these years.
All right, thank you all. Is there a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero.